Good morning.
Good morning. How is everybody? I know everybody's happy it's not raining.
You got that right.
We'll start right away with our invocation by Mr. Shawn Thomas and our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Locke.
Let us pray today. Heavenly Father God, I come to you, Lord, thanking you for this day, God, for another day of life, Lord. God, I pray today that you lead, guide and direct us, Lord. God, if we need anything, we need more of you. So, God, today I pray for that, God. Lord, I pray today that as business is conducted today, God, we do it in a way that's pleasing to you. God, there's no doubt that you've blessed our county and we thank you for that. But, God, the truth is, we need more of you. We need your leadership and guidance. So, God, I pray today that everything that takes place be pleasing unto you. God, again, I thank you for what you've done. And, God, I pray that we'll seek you in everything that we do. In Jesus Christ, holy name I pray.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the flag of the United States of America.
All right. It's time I'll entertain the approval of the minutes. So move, Mr. Chairman. Proper first, proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. So moves. Okay, we will have our proclamation for the Parks and Recreation that'll be read by Commissioner Harvey. Yes, Angie. Yeah, your crew would come up front.
Who's at the park?
I know, right?
Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, today designation of July is Park and Recreation by Proclamation 2018-54. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Putnam County, Florida. And whereas our parks and recreations are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic diseases, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas parks and recreation programs increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of a local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environment, environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and create outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Putnam County recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore be resolved by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Putnam County. Mr. Chairman, I move approval on this proclamation.
Aye. First proper second, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Good minutes, thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say a thank you to some folks if I can. I'd want to thank the Board of County Commissioners and Administration for providing Parks and Recreation with the resources to meet the community's expectations and to pursue our mission as Parks and Recreation professionals. I would like to thank our partners who provide programming services and our volunteers. And what you see here is I have several volunteers from Interlochen Community Center and they make that situation afloat. I would say it's important for them, we wouldn't be proud if something's out. And lastly, I would like to take a moment to thank my staff because even though it looks like there's a lot of us right now, I have seven individuals who take care of over 238 partners. And that is a heavy burden at times, but one they take on every single day without complaining and put forth an honest effort over time. And I have a small crew who provide programming services. So I feel like we do a lot with little. Happy to do it, want to continue to keep doing it. So I want to say thank you. And I also have a community member who's here today who would like to come up and say something and present us with something also. So Mary Lynn. Mary Lynn serves on our Recreation Advisory Board. And there's a group, the Florida Home Parks Association, who have organized themselves and put together some resources and they're just going to share a little bit of those resources with you here today. Thank you. I want to introduce Nels Parks and he serves on our board with the Florida Home Parks and Recreation Association. And I'd also like to introduce to you Christopher Aether. He's the plant manager for both. Nels is going to say a few words, please.
I'm going to bring up a quick photo just to... And this, there's an example of a... Let's try this one too. And if there's an example of a good project that's representative of how National Park Month works all year long, this is a little bit about what we're talking about today. As some of you know, after a couple decades of inactivity, the Florida Home Parks and Recreation Association, which we established last year, has been actively involved with revitalization of Polymeda Park along with the County Department. The park that is a centerpiece of the community of Florida Home. Our first activity was conduct a thorough assessment of existing park facilities, determine their current conditions and identify the maintenance needs, and also conduct surveys of the citizens of Florida Home to see what additional recreational resources would be needed to meet the needs of those community. For that assessment, we developed a plan for short-term, long-term improvements and presented that to both Angie and the County Recreation Advisory Committee. The county had installed a new playground for preschool age children about two years ago. But to encourage park use to get this park back to the vibrant community center of what it was, our assessment determined that an overall stimulus was needed to either restore existing facilities or add additional facilities. The stimulus that we knew was going to be able to require a three-pronged approach of corporate, government, and citizen involvement. On the citizen side, the Air Force Commander Mary Lynn got us organized and established about a year ago. Really excited about the various projects that have gotten done in the last year and some of you have attended. The recent pavilion that was built out there that Ford Power and Light donated funding to match what the county had. And there've been other improvements that we're just excited about. There's been a lot of advancements that have taken place out there. And the community has responded and we're seeing a lot more activity out there. One of the things that we were told from the people using the park is that the playground needed to be expanded to encourage more use for older children. So Mary Lynn reached out to Tracy Johns, who's the Environmental Coordinator with Wilderness Materials. And they were gracious enough to provide some funding that paid for the major playground additions. And that there funding that was a major part of that. This project and other recent plan improvements to Polymeda Park isn't just for the benefit of Florida Home. Some of you already heard me say this. If you've got travelers coming down I-75 or coming down across I-10 and they decide to take State Road 100 to Putnam County, Florida Home granted areas where they get their first impressions in Putnam County. So we're trying to really make that be a good first impression that is the last. Wilderness gracious and extremely generous contribution to this playground additions more than just a donation to this park, it's an investment in Florida Home. That investment is already paying dividends, it's proof of the amount of activity that's taken place in this park in recent months. A year ago, you would hardly see a car or person using the park. Now it is rare not to see several cars and folks using it on a regular basis. And with this project as a catalyst for other improvements to the park, organized group of community activities are now beginning to regularly take place in this park. This government, corporate, and citizen partnership is a shining example of a community need for it. Here with us today is Christopher and he's got the check to present. Remaining portion of that, I just want to ask you to welcome and thank you for the discovery.
This is a great opportunity for us to actually participate. So we appreciate the opportunity to participate.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Angie, I think the chairman came to get the check.
Going to tee it, she's going to receive it. I have no other comments. If anybody else would like to make a comment, welcome to come to the podium. Like I said, we have several volunteers from Interlochen and all my maintenance staff here and programming staff as well. So very proud and honored to work with these folks.
Thank you.
Angie, bring everybody up for official. Stay up here and y'all scatter out. Come on, gather round. Double up.
Thank you very much.
Check, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, all right? Good job. Before we move to the next one, I just want to acknowledge our sheriff is in the room. It's good to see you. Mr. Welburn, if you and your crew would come on up. We're going to do the proclamation for Collector Car Appreciation Day. This is proclamation 2018-55, designating July 14, 2018 as Collector Car Appreciation Day in Putnam County, Florida. Whereas many people in the United States maintain classic automobiles as a pastime and do so with great passion as a means of individual expression. And whereas the collection and restoration of historic and classic cars is an important part of preserving the technology achievements and cultural heritage of the United States. And whereas the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the effects that more than the 100-year history of the automobile has had on the economic progress of the United States and supports wholeheartedly all activities involved in restoration and exhibition of classic automobiles. And whereas the collection, restoration, and preservation of automobiles is an activity shared across generations and across all segments of society. And whereas thousands of local car clubs and related businesses have been instrumental in preserving an historic part of the heritage of the United States by encouraging the restoration and exhibition of such vintage works of art. And whereas automotive restoration provides well-paying, high-skill jobs for people in all 50 states. And whereas automobiles have provided the inspiration for music, photography, cinema, fashion, and other artistic pursuits that have become part of the popular culture of the United States. Now therefore, the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners designates July 14, 2018 as Collector Car Appreciation Day in Putnam County, Florida, and encourages the people of the county to engage in events and commemorations of Collector Car Appreciation Day that creates opportunities for the collector car owners to educate young people about the importance of preserving the cultural heritage of the United States through the collection and restoration of collector cars. Done, ordered, and adopted this 10th day, July 2018, Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of that proclamation. Second, first, proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Charles.
I guarantee you I won't be as long as the last ones. Well, we're not quite that. But we're a small little car club that was formed here in Palaca in 1988. We celebrated our 30th birthday last month. Got roughly about 80 members, which is not bad. We average 30 to 40% of those members at our club meeting. Anytime you get better than 10% at a meeting, you're doing good. But I just want to say thank you. We're one of seven cities in the state of Florida that did this this year. So it's something that's been around for about 10 years. SEMA, I don't know if you know what that is. It's Specialty Equipment Manufacturers Association. And they have a lot to do in Washington, DC as far as the collector cars, hot rods, and so forth goes. So I can't think of anything else to say. I didn't want to stretch it out too long. Oh, okay, yes, we are doing the program at Woody's this coming Saturday, the 14th, 1 to 5. There is a County Commissioners Pick Trophy. If one of you could be there and pick out the car you'd like to take home with you. Well, you can't take it home with you, but you can pick it out. And we'll let you present a trophy to that person saying, yes, if you didn't get the trophy, I'd be taking your car home with me. But, and we're not just saying one of you can come, all of you can come. But we would like to have, if possible, one of you there to present the trophy. The mayor and the city commissioners are going to be there, I think. So like I said, 1 to 5 is the time of it and the awards will go right around 5 o'clock. Thank you, Charles.
Charles, we go down. Now, don't you have a meet every month?
To show you how active our club is, we just started helping road havers for their car show in March. With that one coming on board, we do roughly 38 events a year for the car show. So we do 12 here in town at Pizza Boys. We do 12 over Crescent Beach. We do our annual car show in October. Now we're taking this one on. We do four a year at Woody's. So we're pretty active if we keep going. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think we need to get an opinion from our attorney. We're not going to violate the sunshine by voting for this car show, right? Only if you had a discussion amongst yourselves. There you go. Go individually, man. I'm going to give this moment to Larry, but before I do, I just want to say we were very privileged. We went down to a conference down in Orlando and Mr. Harvey was given the President's Advocate Award. He was given the Leadership and Service Award. And he's now been nominated as the Chairman of the Rural Caucus. I mean, we're very proud of him and he represents us very well down there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Goddard and Commissioner Pickens. They are the new certified county commissioners we have. And they also received the Presidential Advocate Award for their participation in Tallahassee and the work they did with Florida Association of Counties. Great job, guys. Thank you very much. In Alakin, July 4th. It's 34 years I've been able to be a part of either running it or a part of it. And we did the parade. The parade is an outstanding time. The only bad part about the parade is at 10 o'clock in the morning, it's hot. And we tried to move it to November. They won't allow me to move July 4th to November. So we got to stick with July 4th. But we had a great time. But we had a person that received a trophy that had left prior to that. And I want to call up Mason DeLuch. Mason, if you'll come up here, you received the Best Equestrian Trophy at the July 4th day, okay? Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me that opportunity. Thank you very much. And I'm going to take a minute just before I do our recess. Most of you know we've been into our budgets and that has been very interesting. But I want to commend all of the staff and all of the, I mean, Ms. Papel. It's just, it's unbelievable the hours these people have been putting in to get this budget straight. But I'm very pleased with what I've seen as a result of our budget. I know it's been a lot of work and you don't get commended enough. You just, you just really don't. So I'd like to take this moment to commend all of our staff that has been involved in this. It's just been a tough job. And at this time, we'll go to Mr. Don Peckham. He's going to do a presentation for our management, our floodplain management. Yeah, you get to come up front.
Putnam County is, we're active with the community rating system. We are rated as Class D. What that means for our citizens is that we...
Hold the mic closer to you.
The citizens get a reduction in their floodplain insurance premiums because of it. So that's the reason that we got involved with the CRS. But there are other requirements that we have to do because of we are involved with the CRS. And one of them is we have to do an annual update on our floodplain management plan. So I did that update and one of the other requirements is that we have to present it to the governing body. And it also has to be presented to the media. So I brought the report with me to present to the governing body. It requires no action from the Commissioners. It just has to be presented. We have to be able to document that it was presented, so this meeting does that. So I have paper copies here or I'll be happy to email copies to anybody who would need them.
I'll write them up first. I'll write them up electronically. Yep, I'll take that electronically. Appreciate it, Dave. If they need any examples of a floodplain, this is a summer to find. That's right.
We had two floods in recent years that exceeded the base flood elevation. So constantly trying to convince folks that it's better to build a little higher than a little lower. Also, a lot of folks don't realize that your premiums go down as your building moves up. The higher the building, cheaper your premiums will be if you have a flood hazard area. So what I'll do is I'll leave the paper copies here. Anybody that wants to take one. And I will email all of the Commissioners a copy of the report, just so you have it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. Don, I thank you for the hard work. I understand this flood insurance, very simple in the floodplain. I do want to give a little public service announcement as an insurance agent. Flood is outside rising water. It is not storm water that comes in through the roof or the windows. It's outside rising water. So it's like Don said, it's very important that you get the elevation certificates and you know how high you need to go because the water has to travel in and then up. A lot of people get confused about that. So it is outside rising water. It's a very simple process. So thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, I also wanted to mention that Brian Simpson was instrumental in preparing the report, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, what we'll do is if I can get Mr. Peckham to send it over to the IT department electronically, we'll also have it posted to the website so everybody will have a chance to view it and use it and have it as a tool for you. At this time, we're going to recess our board meeting and open our Port Authority meeting.
Mr. Chairman, in the first order of business, I approve the approval of the minutes from the June 26 meeting.
Second. Proper first, proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Thanks. So now we go to comment on Port Authority items. Okay, yes, public comment on Port Authority items. Anybody in the public have any comment on Port Authority items? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. We'll move to the public works. Approval of the lease agreement for First Coast Technical College. Does anyone want to read that or, I mean, we've all looked at it. Mr. Chairman, this is an extension to the current lease that we have out there with the First Coast Technical College. We have asked that we refuse to give them opportunity to finish up classes that currently have scheduled out there in March. Anybody have any comment on it?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Okay, we have a proper approval. We have first...
I'll second.
Do we have a proper first and a second?
Mr. Chairman, that's undisputed. Is there anybody here today from the St. Augustine School District that's asking for this?
Is anyone here from the school?
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all those against, same sign. All right. So we have a discussion on old business. Seeing none, we'll close that and we will close our Port Authority meeting and we will reconvene our board meeting and we'll move to public comment. We prefer the two cards filled out. If you don't, that's okay too. But we'll start with Ms. Christian Mitchell.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. As you are aware, Keep Putnam Beautiful engages in a number of activities to, well, keep Putnam beautiful. We spent a good bit of time... We spent a good bit of time on education about litter and on coordinating cleanups to deal with the litter issue. So, once a year, we do a litter survey to see if our efforts are having a positive effect. This past Friday, three of our board members and myself drove about two hundred miles and visited sixty-three predetermined sites. And I've come today to give you guys a quick report. That, the paper I've given you is our breakdown. I thought you'd like to have it. It's broken down into areas. You'll be able to see what areas in your district are doing great and which ones need some attention. Overall, I'm happy to say that things are better than they were last year. I was especially pleased because last week was the Fourth of July. And often, litter is a critical mass after this holiday. We saw several parks and recreation areas where I expected there to be a lot of trash. But instead, we found a place where I'd be more than happy to take my future grandkids to play. I'd like to specifically mention Lake Stella Boat Ramp, Lake Lagonda Park, and both of the recreation areas at Rodman. They looked really good. And I know that some of you are personally responsible for making that happen, so thank you very much. I also want to mention that I'm very aware that we still have a lot of areas in our county that need work. We also saw several of those while we were on our tour. But I felt it was important to take a moment and encourage the good that I see. I want to inspire you guys to go and inspire the people that you serve to continue doing what we're doing. I believe Putnam County is headed for great things. And I echo the sentiment of Michael Leonard in his column on Monday, that first impressions matter. With that in mind, I have a program that I'd like to sit down and discuss with you all at a future time. I believe this program will be an immediate and positive impact on the waste stream in Putnam County. It'll help to address some of our larger problems like illegal dumping and debris management after a storm. I also hope you'll be able to be willing to sit down and make time to hear about this. And finally, today, I want to ask you to continue to lead in this area of community pride. If you own a business, make sure your parking lot sparkles. How's the area in front of your house look? Are you out picking up trash on a regular basis? It's contagious. If your neighbor sees you out picking up trash, there's a good chance they're gonna join you. And it's gonna have a positive impact where you live directly. Encourage the leaders in your areas to do the same. September fifteenth is our coastal cleanup. Quick little plug there. We have a lot of boat ramps. We have a gorgeous river here, and they need some attention. So, get involved. Mark your calendars. I'll be contacting each of you to see where you'll be able to help us out with that. And finally, today, in closing, I'm gonna leave you with the words of Apostle Paul with his charge of the Galatians, "To not grow weary in well-doing; for in a good time you will reap a harvest for what you've done." We are headed in a good direction in this county. And so, I want to encourage you to continue what you're doing. And thank you very much for everything you do to help keep Putnam beautiful.
Thank you. Chris, what's that date again?
September fifteenth is our coastal cleanup. And we're doing some really great things. We're partnering with the Sheriff's Department on an underwater dive clean, it looks like. And some really exciting stuff we've not done before. So, if you want to be a part of this, it's gonna be good for us.
Mr. Jeff Rawls.
Morning, Jeff Alderman, Carcer. The reason I'm here this morning is to discuss what happened a couple of weeks ago. A resolution was passed for the landfill tipping fee. I wasn't in the country at the time, but I did watch the video. What I realized was that in a two-week period of time, a recommendation from soup to nuts, approved resolution. There was discussion during the meeting to set a cap on the tipping fee. There was discussion about how a contractor had said that they could bury our garbage for twenty-three dollars a ton. There was also discussion about whether or not it was actually what the true cost of tipping is per ton. And I started thinking about it. I came up with some ideas that y'all may or may not know. The words non-feasance, malfeasance, misfeasance comes along. And if you read what I just gave you, you have a fiduciary responsibility to be the people and we the people, to do what's best for us. Why there was such a big hurry to get this thing passed, nobody knows. Maybe y'all have people that are dying to come into the county, might now dump trash, maybe they don't. But the fact of the matter is, if you bring somebody and allow them to dump trash because it's gonna cost a little more diesel and it impacts us, that's harmful to the community. I think that meets the definition of what I get. I think you should familiarize yourself with those three terms. Because you're borderline in some of the actions that you take on committing these misfeasance, malfeasance, non-feasance, and not honoring your fiduciary duty to your constituents and the public. So, I would ask you to reconsider that resolution. Come up with a cap on the landfill. But before you do that, do it in a meaningful, thoughtful way where you actually advise the public on what it really costs us to dump debris in the landfill. I think that number needs to be derived sooner than later, before we start allowing any contracts to be cut. It would definitely benefit the public. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, any other public comment? Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion of our meeting. And we will move to our consent agenda. I'll start with Mr. Lyb.
I had nothing to pull this one.
Mr. Pickens. C.
I have none. Commissioner Pickens pulled C, and that was an item I wanted to say.
Okay. We'll leave to Mr. Pickens.
Yeah, I just didn't have a chance to discuss with some of the staff. Is there anybody here representing this? Mr. Suggs, I just have some questions. Is there not another place to have this particular...
That was the request of location because of its central location to downtown. The different type of businesses and all that are down there. That was the request I came in on the application. That's the extent of the knowledge that I have on this.
Okay. And our legal counsel, you feel comfortable with this is presented with the amount of insurance?
Yes, I worked with Barbara Risk Management. These are the recommended limits for liability insurance. And look at liability insurance for the...
Okay, thank you. If I could, Mr. Chairman, could I speak?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pickens' comment. The courthouse parking lot, just kind of a historical perspective. I don't remember the year, but we revamped that parking lot five years ago. Approximately, yes, sir. What we did was add water and electric all through it. So, it set up at that point for these kind of community events, such as farmers' markets and festivals of any type. Surprisingly, it was used at the first a lot, but then it's fallen off and then kind of stagnant over the last few years. But I'm personally glad to see somebody start using it because we put a lot of effort and resources into making it available for that type of activity.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Thank you. And you're correct, Mr. Lyb. Particularly now that more of the riverfront property has got other uses, as I think it should. And it's not just as open and reserved for major events. This is one of the reasonable likely spots to do that because it still is central to the downtown business district. And as you mentioned, we worked to add water and electricity options in there. And it really is just a convenient place. And I personally would support the resolution allowing this to happen. From a historical perspective, years ago, when the Blue Crab Festival started and there was a discussion about whether you should sell beer there or not. And there was a lot of trepidation about making that happen. But with proper oversight and the rules in place, these have now become common in those public areas. We're seeing businesses that have proposed to build downtown one, a craft brewery, one that's already established on Second Street. They really don't have any negative impacts that I see like they were perceived to twenty and twenty-five years ago. Just not that same day. So, I would encourage the adoption of this allowance for this. And let them come back and make a report and tell you whether that worked or not. It's not really on the courthouse property, it's the parking lot. So, there still is that separation from, you know, respect of the courthouse property versus the parking lot. So, those are my comments. Thank you. Would you like to come forward and speak, Ms. Correa?
Robbie Correa, One Eighteen Dodge Street, beautiful downtown Palatka. I'm the chair of the Vitalizer's Truck Palatka, formerly known as Palatka Main Street. The person organizing this event, rather, is Eric Leivers. And he is very knowledgeable about craft beer, very connected to that network. We are modeling an after the Deland as a similar event, a very successful event. The reason why we requested the use of the courthouse parking lot was because, as Mr. Smith said, so many things occur on the riverfront. We wanted something more central to drive people all the way downtown and to be aware of what businesses exist. We're here to promote Palatka more than anything else as an organization. And so, that was why we chose that. Obviously, we would get an insurance rider. We have insurance, we would get a rider. We would also have to complete the special events permit packet for the city as well and have a police and fire emergency presence. So, we would follow all those requirements. And we certainly would be more than willing to report back on how this works. And we hope to make an annual event as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Robbie. And also Clerk Smith and Commissioner Lyb for explaining. I just didn't know, so I had to ask on the South Buckler voice, so.
That's great. I mean, that's great. And we have a number of events coming up in the fall, and we're excited about that. St. John's River Bottom Frolic. We're gonna frolic in the streets that's at the beginning of the Three Hundred Block. That's September twenty-ninth. Craft Beer Festival on October thirteenth. The St. John's River to Sea Loop dedication. We're gonna have a wine stroll on November seventeenth on all the downtown businesses. And then a Palatka Historic Churches Tour on December second. So, we'd love to see you all come visit us downtown and downtown Palatka, positively Palatka.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Great commercial.
It's good.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready to entertain the motions?
Yes, I am.
I move approval of the consent agenda items A, C, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Okay, we have a proper motion.
I'll second.
Proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Aye, agenda moves. So, we now get to go to Mr. Tim Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Susan Frank, Finance Director, has some comments she wants to make.
We're pleased to say that we got our audit report, and it was a clean opinion. The CAFER went to the General Government Finance Officers Association on Friday, June twenty-ninth. So, we did meet our deadline. And the audit report also went out to the state Audit General's Office. We will be getting those in paper for you soon. But we're pleased to report that that is done.
Thank you.
That's all we have, sir.
Good news.
It's very good news. All right.
She loves to talk in the microphone. Yes, she does.
All right, appointments, I'll start with Mr. Turner.
I have none today, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I've had several of the members of some of these committees come and talk to me, especially the fishing firm, asking that we go ahead and try to get those people pointed. They want to start meeting and seeing what they can do in that committee. So, I just wanted to maybe bring that up if the commissioners can maybe start trying to find some way.
I just on a note of that, I spoke with Jimmy over at Nessrs. And he's gonna post, got with Angie, we're gonna post basically what the positions are and what their, you know, what their job entails. And he's gonna promote that with the next fishing tournament. Hopefully, we'll have...
I think we have everybody except one, I think.
Oh, we do. Yeah, that's been harder than I thought. I talked to these fishermen, and they, I don't want to do that. I don't have the time. So, it's been entertaining. Mr. Harvey?
No, I have none. But I also echo the sentiments of my fellow Commissioner Turner. I've been getting calls about the meeting. I spoke to Angie this morning about that. There is five people on there now. There's six people total that need to be on the board. And she's gonna reach out today. Everybody, they have all the numbers. We can start meeting. We can start moving this committee forward. So, all right, that's all I have, sir.
Mr. Chairman, was there one last thing? Ma'am, there's not here today. So, she was gonna check on her library board appointments. Does anybody know if she was able to do that yet or not?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Turner, I'm not aware of any dialogue. She hasn't given me any information on it. I guess Amanda will be back when we say we'll check on that and bring it to you as soon as we get that information back. Go ahead, for sure.
Mr. Lyb?
I have none today.
I have guns either, but I would like to comment on the fishing if I was in board. We've got five, and they're ready to go. So, just adding that sixth person would be great. And I think we can expect some good things from that.
Any other comments? Mr. Suggs?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. If you don't mind, I'd like to take the pleasure this morning to welcome the newest member to the Putnam County family. If I could have Mr. John. He tells us his name is pronounced Seoffy, but I believe it's Choffee. Did I get it correct? Sir, if you'd come up front and join us for just a minute?
That's not what you told me.
I told you what he told me it was.
Learned his name, and now it's an anger telling me he's got a different name.
Hey, listen, I can only pass out the information that's given to me. But...
John works better.
Just want to take the opportunity this morning, John, to introduce you to the Board of County Commissioners, our Honorable Clerk of the Court, Mr. Tim Smith, and our Honorable Sheriff, Governor DeLoach. And welcome you to the Putnam County family. We're so grateful to have you here. John comes to us via Green Coast Springs, formerly with the City of Fort Lauderdale, I believe it was. I believe John, in meeting with John and talking with John after the interview process, I believe John understands the vision and mission of this Board of Commissioners as well as what our community needs and our residents need. And I'm looking for great things from my Mr. Seoffy. And I don't have any hesitation to think that we'll get what we're looking for. John, welcome again.
I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with everybody where we need to be.
I'd like you to pronounce your own last name.
Seoffy.
Joffe.
Seoffy.
Seoffy.
Yes, sir.
That's not what you told me yesterday.
Just messing with you.
I'll answer to either one. I'm good.
I don't know what his real name is.
Bottom line is, he just wants it spelled correctly on the check.
That'll work.
John, I want to welcome you first, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. And I want to say you've got big shoes to fill. Kevin was a great man. And I tell you, when I first got here, he said one thing to me. No, it's not in the code, but we'll see if we can make it work. And I appreciate that. Putnam County is on the brink of great things coming forward. And you being at the helm would be very helpful to us, so thank you.
Welcome aboard.
I also have high expectations. I had the opportunity to meet him earlier. And I did some checking up on him where he came from, too. I can't help but have to.
I would expect that.
And he came to us with very high regards from where he came from. So, I have high expectations. Welcome. I look forward to working with you. If there's anything I can do, please let me know.
I appreciate it.
Chairman. John, welcome, same thing. Comments, board? With Commissioner Turner's remarks, can you give us any kind of snapshot into the future of what this department might look like under your leadership? Particularly in efficiencies, what we're looking for, online permits and this sort of thing?
Yes, sir. We're gonna push forward to get online permitting in place. I need to evaluate what's out there and what will work best for Putnam County. We don't want to get a system that's, you know, always having major downs. And that seems to be a problem. You go online with the permitting, there's always hiccups. So, I want to get a system that's already tried and true and something that'll work for all the residents, contractors, online payments, the whole nine yards. We don't want an incomplete system, so I'm not gonna rush it. But I want to get the right program for the county.
I can't speak for all the commissioners, but I think we're really looking...
I can't speak for all the commissioners, but I think we're really looking forward to this.
We are. I'll do my best to get us online as quick as possible.
Good deal.
Don't want to rush it, get us in the wrong program.
Yeah, John, just glad you're with us and looking forward to working with you. If anything I can do personally, and looking for your good ideas and direction in that regard. I appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before John gets too far, I want to make sure that he knows Susan Frank, who's the Finance Director. And I appreciated the fact that you talked about with your online options that you'll be looking at, that there's a financial component of that for payments and those. So if you'll make sure that our office is in your discussion of all that, and we can make better improvements to all of that for our citizens. Thank you.
It's a nice one, but right hand knows what hand is doing.
Mr. Chairman, that's all my comments this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Manning?
I have nothing, sir. Want something?
That's just nice, too.
You never want unprovoked comments.
And I'm going to start with Mr. Lybblin. Okay, I appreciate it. Looking back, the week, the Friday before the Fourth of July holiday, we had an adoption event that we all agreed to the first Friday of each month, and we held to it. But I miss you guys. You were all at conferences and this sort of thing. The adoption event went really well, but I think when we all work together, it goes even better. We did get some animals out, but really looking forward for the first one in August, and you guys coming back on board. Let's get that thing rolling like we did the first time. I appreciate it. What date is that in August? The first Friday of August. I think it's the fifth. I didn't bring the calendar. Actually, I have it right here. I believe it's the third. What is it? I think it might be the third. Okay. Yeah. Mr. Pickens?
Just want to mention about the Florida Association of Counties Convention that I attended, and Commissioner Goddard and Commissioner Harvey, I believe Press Tom was there as Public Works Director, and Stacy Manning had his group down there for legal counsel. But anyway, it was well put on, a lot of good seminars. Buddy and I had to do, I think it was six one-and-a-half-hour electives, and we took a couple of them on the opioid epidemic in the United States. It was really eye-opening to just see how bad and widespread that is. So definitely learned about that. And we took some other electives, but it was really a good conference to see all the different commissioners there and their ideas of how hard they're working for their communities. And congratulations on Larry for his awards and his new position. And so just a good conference. Fourth of July, the interlocking, Town Line Locking, they do it up, right? I attended the parade and rode actually with Commissioner Harvey. He needed a little break and was glad for the break and some air conditioning in my truck. But it was well attended. I hope the rain didn't bother the event. I left at about twelve o'clock, but I just want to commend Larry for his efforts for over thirty years of putting that on with the town of Palatka, and it was excellent.
Palatka.
Interlock. South Buckland. I'm a South Buckland guy.
Mr. Turner?
I'm going to make a comment that everyone absolutely knows. It's been raining. Evidently last week it rained a lot. I had thirty emails in two days about roads and ditches and a lot of areas that were flooding that haven't ever flooded before. With the amount of rainfall we've been having since the hurricanes, I think it was Commissioner Harvey that made the comment one time, not too long ago, last year, about this time he was mowing the grass at the end of his dock, and now the dock's under water, or something along those lines. And it's going on everywhere. And so, having said that, I would like to commend public works for the job they're trying to do to keep up with this. Now, I'm sure that I could get a lot of people to argue with me about it, but that's because they're not seeing the overall picture. They're not seeing that they're working as hard as they can to try and get as much of this done as soon as they can. And I understand that there's some complaints about that they're not doing it to the level that they ought to be doing it while they're fixing on it. But they're trying to get more done in a shorter period of time to get people where they can get into their places and so, and then put them on a list of when they find the time to come back and do it. So I hope the public will understand that during this hard time and all this water that we're having, they're doing the best job that they can do. And if it takes us a day or two to get to your house because you have a mud puddle in front of your driveway that's four inches deep, but it's not muddy, it's just got water in it, please understand that somebody not too far away may have a three-foot hole in front of their driveway, and they're parking on the road and walking in every day to get to their house. So they're having to prioritize these things. And I'm just hoping the public will give us a little bit of leeway here if they possibly could, and maybe we could get to as many of them as soon as we possibly can. That, Mr. Chairman, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank everyone that came out to July fourth in Interlock, and it was a great event. A lot of people. It was on a Wednesday. It was hot. The rains did hold off until the afternoon, and rained right up until about seven. And then we had a great band down at the lake and great fireworks display. The town really goes out and really puts on a good show for the citizens of West Putnam. And we really appreciate the town doing that. On another note, something that's exciting to me that is happening with our Florida Association of Counties, as you know, I serve on the Foundation Board there. And one of my big things since I've been elected and been on that Foundation Board is higher education after we're done with CCC and ACC, what other courses we can take. Well, the Foundation Board is contracted with University of Florida and the IFIS Division, and we will be bringing out courses that maybe deal with higher finance or deal with how to build better roads and infrastructure, what communities do in planning, a little bit more knowledge for those of you who want to continue on the course and gain more knowledge in government. I will say this, I could not have done this job without going through the classes and learning what I did, and I appreciate our association with our Small County Coalition and our Florida Association of Counties. Mr. Chairman?
That's all the comments I have. Thank you. Thank you very much. As you know, we were at the conference down there, and it is good. We're around, you know, all the other commissioners, and we're not isolated. We all, every county out there has their own problems. Ours happens to be right now dirt roads. And as Mr. Harvey says all the time, all dirt roads are bad. Some are just a little bit better than others, but they're all bad. I, my wife and I enjoy riding around all over Putnam County. We always find something, something great to do. And I made it my special goal to go down some roads that I know that are generally bad all the time. And of course, I have a Jeep, so I was in four-wheel drive, and I had a tough time going down a lot of these roads. And actually, there were several that I didn't go all the way. There were signs up that said, you know, full-wheel drives only. Some of them had trucks already stuck there, so I didn't even attempt to try to go in there. But all I can say is our Public Works Department is working on it as hard as they can. You just can't grade much. That's just a problem. Just be careful out there. All the other counties are having a problem. Unfortunately, we, our river is full, our lakes are full. There's just no place for this water to go. Just be careful out there. Other than that, enjoy Putnam County. We're very fortunate to live here. With that, our meetings. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think that that means that you're not a true four-wheeler if you didn't try to drive around all those stuck trucks.
You know, let me explain how this is. As a young man, I never used reverse. But with my wife in there, I've gotten where I use that reverse a lot. We just, we don't go out. I have been out there waist-deep in mud too many times. I've lost the zest for it. I just assume, stay sitting in the seat, put it in reverse, and back on the, and I recommend everyone else. If you get to these areas that look bad, don't go down it. Just turn around. With that, our meeting's adjourned. Thanks.
Good job.